All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. My call to order the February 27th, 2014, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. First thing we'll do is do the roll called by County Administrator Crupp. I will mention that Toody Smith, Commissioner Smith is absent. She's down at Salem at the Legislature. Always a fun thing. Mr. Crupp.
Commissioner Bernard.
Oh, aye. Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
And indeed, I'm here. It's a 4-0 vote, Jim. We're all here. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance? There's no comma after "Nation."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move the agenda around just a hair to accommodate the public in having their discussion on these items, but also in regards to some people who have to leave. And that is, so we will have the Citizens' Communication, then we'll have a discussion item, and then we will have the previously approved land use board order, and then a board discussion item after that. So that's the agenda as we have it here. So I will call, let's see, I will call people forward in the Citizens' Communication and in deference to an elected official. We will call Mr. Jeremy Ferguson, the Mayor of Milwaukee, first, along with Charles Savoy. Jeremy Ferguson, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm here, if I could, I would stay longer so I could speak at the specific agenda item, but I have another meeting to go to. I'm here today to thank you for the county's cooperation in getting our Riverfront Park easement access moving forward. I know it's not signed yet, but I'm hoping that it'll be a unanimous vote today to sign that agreement. I just delivered to Chris Story two copies of the agreement and Milwaukee's first payment on the easement. So, thank you very much for your cooperation. I want to thank the River Health Advisory Board, and I speak on behalf of the citizens of Milwaukee City Council and specific committees that have been working on this Riverfront Park project for many years. It's much appreciated to be moving forward. By the end of this year, we'll have a new boat ramp and a floating boat dock for transient boaters, and I'm very excited to be forging ahead.
Thank you, Jeremy. You know, for those that are listening out there that don't understand the whole picture there, it has to do with Milwaukee's waterfront. We are adjacent to that with our Clackamas County Service District Number One facility, and there's some property there which we are long-term leasing, the city, and have come to an agreement as to the price of that. And I think will work out fantastically, and it'll aid towards a transformation, a metamorphosis of that entire area down there, and the proper management of runoff, certainly, and the preserving of natural areas. But again, I appreciate your participation, Jeremy, and your message was a lot different than what we saw on the newspaper about this transaction, so I thank you for your time. Commissioner Savis.
Well, yeah, despite, you know, the reports in the newspaper, overall, I just want to say the overall tenor of negotiations in the last two or three years has been positive and remarkable. So I just want to thank the mayor and the City Council for their cooperation. You know, we've had, you know, this has not been easy. You know, we've had some things we had to work through, and sometimes there's a, you know, you go through a little periods of difficulty, but overall, the, we are all working to the best interest, we're all working in good faith, and we got across the finish line finally. I know this has been going on for decades, and also the Milwaukee agreement we signed for sewer about a little over a year ago. We've just made remarkable progress. I just wanted to thank the mayor and the City Council and the city for their cooperation and professionalism through this, so. And thanks for you got the yellow shirt memo.
Yeah, I did. I didn't have a match and tie, so I just left it off.
Commissioner Bernard.
Actually, I was Chair of the Riverfront Board many years ago when we adopted the plan. I was, it was very frustrating, but, you know, one of the things that we need to fix is that we've tended to have an adversarial relationship with our cities. And when I was mayor, we definitely did with the county. And sometimes we had to use tactics to try and push the county in a certain way, and newspapers were often the way we did it. And, you know, I think that Clackamas County has worked hard to try and fix those relationships, and we haven't yet been successful. But one of the reasons I decided to run for the Commission was because of that role that we were always fighting, and some of the land use issues on the riverfront were created to try and push the county in a certain direction, as you well know.
You're revealing all the truth now.
And I was part of some of those, and, you know, in the Kellogg negotiations, and finally, we were able to come to a resolution together and partner on various things like that. So I hope that in the future, you know, instead of going to Salem with a newspaper, we can all get together and talk through these issues, and I think we can. So thank you, and I'm excited to see the riverfront finally happening. And again, I want to thank Mr. the Klein family for donating that property, which would have never, the riverfront would have never done, been able to be developed without their support. So, thank you, Gary Klein.
And Gary wanted me to pass along his wishes to the, to the Commission. He couldn't be here today, but he wanted to be here and speak positively.
Well, Mayor Ferguson, again, our thanks from the Commission and also to your staff. Many thanks to Chris Story, Assistant Legal Counsel, for working with your staff, and also to Commissioner Savis for the work he did in resolving this. So again, thank you for coming today.
Thank you very much. Have a good meeting.
See you tonight.
Okay. Yeah, I'll see all of you tonight. Well, Commissioner Schrader.
I don't think they're gonna like this. Come here in spirit.
Okay.
Mr. Savoy.
Good morning. Charles Savoy, citizen of Oak Grove. At approximately one hour and 34 minutes into the video of the February 6 business meeting, Mr. Ludlow denigrated the professional commitment that paramedic Louis Coleman promised at the January 30 meeting. Mr. Ludlow also spoke derisively about AMR's service to the citizens of Clackamas County. Due to three-minute time allowance, I've abridged Mr. Ludlow's comments by removing some parts that are not directly pertinent to his allegations. Quote, "On that very day," referring to the day of Mr. Coleman's promise, "on this floor, one of our employees went down and American Medical Response was late. We have the tapes. We know everything about that and how long it took them to get here. So I hope that the good service that was promised continues, and I pray to God I do not have a heart attack. Ordinarily, I would share information regarding how the EMS system functions to explain to someone why they might have a misperception of an event. However, because Commissioner Ludlow is someone who can reasonably be expected to be knowledgeable about the EMS system, I'm only going to state the facts. What follows is from the CAD record of the call that was referenced. On January 30th, CCOM received a 911 call requesting medical assistance for a person with non-traumatic back pain on the fourth floor of this building. Using established triage standards, CCOM determined the patient's condition was not potentially life-threatening, and accordingly, an ambulance was dispatched, priority two, no lights and sirens. The closest ambulance, AMR 262, went en route from near Clackamas Park. Approximately two minutes later, that unit was reassigned and diverted to another call that had been triaged as potentially life-threatening. Subsequently, the next closest ambulance, AMR 266, was assigned to the call here and arrived 12 minutes after being assigned. There is nothing in the CAD record that indicates that the call was upgraded to priority one, lights and sirens. Nevertheless, if fire personnel had requested that AMR 266 upgrade, the required response time would have been met. This was a priority-two dispatch, which was subject to the, which was not subject to the 90% eight- or 10-minute response time requirements for urban zones. Therefore, the ambulance was not late, contrary to what Commissioner Ludlow very authoritatively stated. Mr. Ludlow, you have stated that you had the tapes and that you knew everything about the call. Given these statements and the facts that I presented, I think it is reasonable to ask, did you intend to mislead the public, or was it merely due to you not being as well-formed about the EMS system as you're purported to be? Regardless, it seems reasonable to ask for an apology to AMR and the paramedic which were vehemently denigrated.
Well, I don't like the two choices you gave me. I'll just say that. All I know is that, and I know the tapes and how, what time you got into the elevator, et cetera. I don't care about non-life-threatening. I've never seen or rarely seen anybody in that kind of agony. I don't care what the fire department said to you, Mr. Savoy, and it is Mr. Savoy, isn't it?
Yes.
Then it's Ludlow, not Ludlow. You know, I've said my piece about ambulance services, and again, I say it, I'll say it again, I probably don't have a heart attack, because I saw a man writhing in pain, worse than I'd ever seen, and I thought the response was late. I'll still stick with that. So you won't get an apology from me today, but sir, I sure appreciate you bringing this up. Mr. Savis.
Yeah, I looked into this a little bit, and what I was told, which I think Mr. Savoy, you know, somewhat referenced, but I just thought I'd just maybe elaborate a little bit, that the fire department did show up, their group did show up, and assess the situation, and as Mr. Savoy properly stated, they did not raise it to a priority one. They assessed the issue, had it under control. So if they felt that it needed to, they had that option, and then, but they did not. So I just wanted to clarify that there was a response, and there was an assessment right away, and I do know that they decided to stabilize the patient, the employee here at the county, and they took their time about how they approached it. So there was no need to transport, there was no need for transport, immediate transport, and, and as, and I think as, as Mr. Savoy properly stated, the appropriate actions and activities occurred with, with no compromise, as I understood.
I don't know what compromise means. All I know is what late means, and I'll still say that they were late. So sir, I well know that AMR provides outstanding service. We've heard that from the fire chiefs, we've heard that from many union members, we've certainly heard that from different Commissioners. I hope that outstanding service continues. Thank you. Mr. Poole.
I live in Gladstone, as you probably know. I'm here almost every week. I think last week was probably the first time I haven't spoken in quite some time.
You came in late. I was really embarrassed for you.
Yeah, and I sat in the back. You know, you sacrifice the front row when you come in late. Fact is, if you turn in a contract late, it doesn't get accepted. Couple of things. One is, on the agenda today is the board order for Tonkin Holdings, and that is the plan to convert 34 acres into a quarry. I'm the former owner of that property. I know it very well, and obviously, there's no testimony on that, but hopefully, the county is really careful about what happens on the west side of that property where there are wetlands. It's up against the Tuolton Wildlife Refuge and Rock Creek. Rather ironic that a lot of the expertise I have in land use was because of the amazing geography, politics, and things that are connected to that property, which borders Washington County. I appreciate that Toody is in Salem today, and hopefully, she's testifying or doing some lobbying on behalf of the county regarding the fiasco that our good friends at Metro created. I was there on Tuesday and spoke. There's a bill in the Legislature by Representative Clem, and it addresses Washington County. Any input and comments that you or the staff has as we move forward to be appreciated. I also brought with me, I want to clarify something. Hopefully, this will show up on the video. I'm not a vindictive person, but that's a photo of Mr. Bernard's property in downtown Milwaukee, and it's taken from the current location of the light rail tracks. I have never had a problem with Mr. Bernard owning property down there. My, my issues have been how the trolley trail was treated, how Clackamas County was treated in the effort to extend the line beyond downtown Milwaukee so that the parking and the undesirable aspects of the line ended up elsewhere. Clearly, if you look at that photo and you recall some of the testimony we heard in the past, and coincidentally, this gentleman's ethics complaint, the real issue was that Commissioner Bernard spoke about his business, not his property. I invite you all to take a look at the South Downtown Plan. It's very clear that light rail has negative impacts on some property, as in the case of the trolley trail. It can have positive impacts around the station areas. The station is planned for directly across the street. Mr. Bernard, at one point, finally admitted or claimed that he owns or has interest in five, not two, properties, and I find that very, very disturbing. I'll say no more, and hopefully, I won't have to listen to any damage control at the end of the meeting by Commissioner Bernard. Thank you.
I don't know, I don't know about damage control, but Mr. Bernard would like to say something.
Well, that picture, actually, the impact on my business has been very negative. I lost a driveway that was the drive-through for what used to be the gas pumps, which has had a huge impact. Business is down considerably because of it, and light rail, the station is not across the street from me. Maybe you, I don't know what angle you're looking at, but it's actually down the block from me. Across the street is a tree and a, and a wetlands area, but it's, it's been very challenging, and I never admitted to five properties. I mean, that's what somebody suggested there was one other property. It may be five, I don't remember. Now it's one. My grandfather and father over the years bought pieces around the garage. I bought a piece in the 80s, but the suggestion that I owned the whole block and the next block was made many times. The Ethics Commission reviewed this, determined that there was nothing wrong with it, and I'm frankly, a little bit tired of you bringing it up again. And, you know, I got an email the other day that said, you know, why don't you think of something else to say sometime, and actually, do something positive for the counties instead of complaining about what's happened in the past and claims that have been suggested? But, you know, I'm excited about light rail. I think Milwaukee, I understand $19 million worth of infrastructure increases for a $5 million commitment to pay tramet. That's pretty tremendous. I mean, Milwaukee, those streetlights and underground wiring, the improvements to intersections, a quiet zone, sewer pipe, water pipe, updates around my property, which actually have no impact on myself, and, and they also raised the sidewalk afoot, so I had quite the drainage problem, which they had to fix. And so I look forward to that, the day I can cut that ribbon and be part of a great celebration, one that Clackamas County deserves, and Milwaukee certainly does too.
Mr. Woods.
Chair, Mr. John Ludlow, and Commissioners. My name is MacArthur Woods, Clackamas County voter. I had come here today prepared to talk about, for the veterans, to stand up for the veterans. We all get these newspapers, each one. You're going to get to read about what goes on right here. Thank God we got some actual proof, including some of your comments. Mr. Bernard, I'm, out of respect, I'm not going to mention that, but people are going to be able to read about it soon. The veteran, it's the veteran, not the reporter, who has given us freedom of the press. It's the veteran, not the politician, who has given us the freedom of speech. It's the veteran, not the politicians, who has given us the freedom to vote in Clackamas County, and we got a lot of them. We're getting the word out there to them. I'm also a member of the Elks. They write articles free for me. I'm a member of the VFW. They write articles free about Clackamas County things that the, that the Commissioners vote on, and that's why I changed my speech today to talk about what's going on on the agenda here on February 27th, 2014. Item, back page, item two, I changed my menu. Item four, everything that you vote yes on costs somebody some money. It's more specifically the property owners in Clackamas County that cost us taxpayers some money. Item four, down there, the last line, on this thing they want money for, it talks about temporary assistance. For goodness sakes, how long is temporary? Is it a month? Is it a year? Is it 10 years? Is it forever? In your time of discussion, what we, the public, the taxpayers would like to see under discussion is how much it's going to cost us taxpayers, yes, veterans too. So that would be good to see you Commissioners do, that you're voting on things that cost us money, in other words, raise our taxes. Tell us how much it's going to raise our taxes. Tell us what the impact of it. How long is temporary, for goodness sakes? I think I'll leave it at that, and I'll talk about the veterans next week.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Where are you referring to?
Back page of the agenda. Turn it over, the back page. A, under health, housing, and human services. And with that question, I know there's a lot of these people that's feeding off of the free stuff. I'm talking about the ones that's on Wacky Tobacco and other things to get the free stuff.
That's all right, go ahead.
Why not have them have a drug test? The veterans have drug tests, the VS service officers have drug tests. Why can't we get, I will kick in to help pay for drug tests for people that's getting money from the taxpayers under, that's working for the Housing Authority.
Real quickly.
That's a no-brainer.
Real quickly.
Yes, sir.
You know, to a large extent, H3S, Health, to a large, to a large extent, H3S, which is Health, Housing, and Human Services.
What is H3S? There's a lot of things I don't know.
I just said that. Health, Housing, and Human Services.
Okay, go ahead.
So that's who administers this money. To the great extent, Mac, this is money that we wouldn't have unless the feds or state gave it to us.
We pay feds taxes.
I understand that, sir, but would you rather, would you rather we just say, we don't want any of that money, and we don't have any to pass out?
Yes, that's what we want to hear you say.
If everybody did that, that'd be great, but in the meantime, if we're not taking that, I don't want to call it free money, because you're right, it's taxes, paid one way or another, it's taxes. If we said we don't want that money, they simply take that money and give it to somebody else.
No, they don't give it to anybody. We pay it, and we want to stop paying it. We're getting taxed out of our homes. You need to understand that and start saying, "Vote." Every one of you, start saying, "No." Every one of you needs to know what people, that property owners out here in Clackamas County that you vote on are paying in taxes, and start saying, "No," for goodness sakes.
My point, then, you need to tell the feds and the state to say, don't, don't make any money available to anybody, and that's what your message is.
John, let's be reasonable. Come on, don't.
Well, I meant for this service.
You've got more brains than that.
I meant for this service. I'm not talking about everything. I'm saying for this service. If you think it's wrong, tell them they're wrong, so they don't send it anywhere.
I'm already doing it. You don't hear me. There's a lot of things, you don't know what you don't know. That goes for every one of you, not trying to insult anybody, it's just facts. You don't know veterans, and people like Mr. Kurt Schrader that voted in this healthcare bill under Obama, now look what we're dealing with. If he had have voted no, we wouldn't be doing what.
Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you for your time.
Well, I mean, I think the problem here is that defining needy people, most of these people are, one of our priorities has been veterans, single parents.
You're wrong, I checked into that.
I'm not talking to you, Mac.
Well, he's arguing about me.
I'm not arguing. Please.
He brings up veterans, that's why I'm going to tell you.
Well, he has a right to do that, sir.
I'm going to walk back, I don't want to listen to it anymore.
That's probably best.
I'm going to, in fact, leave probably, because there's a limit on how much us common-sense veterans got to tolerate and listen to personally.
Well, look, what you're constantly saying is that somehow we are ignorant, that some, no, you're not going to answer that. Somehow we are wrong, we don't understand veterans' issues. Do you think Martha Schrader, a champion for veterans, was a veteran? No? She's a, eh, well, we're going to decide that. Commissioner Bernard, go ahead and finish, please. Yeah, thank you, it's probably best. Ladies and gentlemen, this Commission works very hard to listen to veterans' issues. We have professionals employed that take care of veterans' needs as best they can. We have three veteran service officers that work very hard in coordinating veterans' needs and working with the federal government, which is an uphill battle, is it not? To get those very deserved rewards for their fantastic service that they gave to us. I'm not a veteran. I tried to join, wasn't able to. Is that held against me somehow? My father was a veteran, my grandfather a veteran. I listen to veterans' needs, but there is going to be some disagreement out there about services rendered, and that's what we have here, I think. Commissioner Savis.
Well, thank you, Chair. I think you, I agree with your comments regarding, you know, our stewardship and responsibilities, and I know that we have to look at and recognize the needs, and I think that Agenda Item Four, as I read, is basically for child resource services, so it's about kids there, and just for the record, just to clarify that, as I understand it, there's nothing on this agenda that will result in an increase in any taxes.
I agree.
Right? These are established funding, we have no, it's federal funding, which we have no control over, and as stated before, if we don't apply for those services, then other competing areas will apply and win those amounts, and those amounts are fixed. By our action of applying for those does not increase any federal obligation or allocations that would result in a tax increase. So just want to state that for the record.
Thank you. All right. We are done with public comment, and now the first item on the agenda is a discussion item. The Board will adjourn as the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Clackamas County Service District Number One Board for the next item. Mr. Crupp.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, this is an item to. Whoops, excuse me, let me get my button on here. This is an item to consider the adoption of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and the City of Milwaukee regarding access and development near the Kellogg Tree, Kellogg Creek Treatment Plant, and I'm going to invite Mr. Chris Story, excuse me, Assistant County Counsel, to address this matter.
Good morning, Commissioners. The topic's already been broached, we've had the conversation with the mayor, so I'll just briefly note the terms of the agreement before you. In addition to the consideration for the easement that CCSD One will be selling to the City of Milwaukee, it also outlines certain concerns to ensure the continued functionality of the Kellogg plant during the development process and after the park is developed, including traffic flow layouts and shared parking spaces and enforcement, and those sorts of items, that we hope will ensure that both Kellogg and the park will function well together. But overall, I think you've, you've already breached many of the topics, so I'll just make myself available to questions.
Well, that was a great presentation, and quite succinct, by the way, Chris. Well done. So, any questions by the Commissioners? This has been long discussed. Commissioner Savis, you're appropriate, I think.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to, I know the mayor earlier spoke to this issue to some degree, and just want to thank staff for their involvement in this. It's been, you know, one of those longstanding issues that we've been slowly worked through, and, and we've managed to get across the finish line, so appreciate the help, Chris, and other staff at Wes, who helped us with this, and finding a solution to that access issue, and even some members of ODOT. And finding a solution to that access issue, and even some members of ODOT that participated in this as well, was, we've been at this for a long time, so it's great to know that today's the day.
I had in error said it was a long-term lease, it's actually an easement that is being purchased by the City of Milwaukee. Now, this is a public comment discussion item, so I'll ask if anyone wishes to speak on this item, just come forward, give us your information. Mary, I'll have you fill out a card. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? We already had the mayor, I think that might be the extent of it. It looks like that. So I will ask for a motion. Chair Ludlow, I move we approve the intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and the City of Milwaukee regarding access and development near the Kellogg Treatment Plant.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Savas, and seconded by Commissioner Schrader, to approve of this intergovernmental agreement. Any further discussion or clarification needed? All right, Mary, will you please take the poll?
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes four zero. Announce that the board will adjourn as the Clackamas County Service District Number One Board and reconvene as the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Mr. Krupp.
Yes, let me ask Mr. Nate Boderman to come to the dais to address this. This is a proposed board order regarding a previously approved land use issue. It involves the adopting of a comprehensive plan amendment, a zoning map amendment, and a site plan review. So, Mr. Boderman.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. Nate Boderman, Assistant County Counsel here. This is essentially a follow-up to previously approved land use action, which, again, essentially related to the authorization of mining activities by Tonquin Holdings LLC. Specifically this morning, the board is approving three separate applications with conditions of approval. The three applications are as follows. Post-acknowledgement Plan Amendment of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan to Designate the Subject Property, approximately 34 acres, as a Goal Five Significant Mineral and Aggregate Resource Site in Chapter Three, Table Three dash O2 of the Comprehensive Plan. It's identified as application Z0287-13-CP2. A zoning map amendment to apply a mineral and aggregate overlay designation to the subject property, that application was identified as Z0288-13-Z. And three, a mineral and aggregate overlay district site plan review application, which was identified as Z0289-13-MAR. It's been a few months since, we were last before you on this, and so a refresher on the procedures is perhaps helpful. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter September 16th, 2013, and October 7th, 2013, and at that public hearing adopted a series of motions related to different aspects of this application, based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff, along with testimony received during the hearing process. After the Planning Commission hearing, this was before the Board of County Commissioners on October 30th, 2013, at which time testimony and evidence were presented. On November 13th, 2013, a unanimous decision was made by this board to approve the application subject to staff's proposed conditions as modified by the applicant's additional proposed conditions in a letter they submitted on November 4th, 2013. At that board meeting, the board also decided to impose a new condition pertaining to the use of a street sweeper on Morgan Road, and to adopt newer amended language for the conditions adopting, or I'm sorry, addressing groundwater or storage of interim potable water for one or more of the five properties identified in Condition 48 in the staff report at that time. This board then directed staff to prepare the requested amendments to the conditions of approval and to draft a board order finalizing that decision. So that's where we're at today. Staff has gone ahead and amended the draft conditions of approval and presented those to you here today. The conditions of approval in the staff report reflect that board decision, and what we've done is gone ahead and renumbered a number of the conditions of approval. Be happy to address any of those if you do have questions, but those have been included in your materials. What we've also done is made some final quality control edits for formatting and consistency purposes within those conditions of approval. Specifically, Condition 48 was amended, and a new condition identified as 49A was added to address the groundwater monitoring and to provide additional mitigation or remediation. Condition 74A was added to impose the street sweeping requirement. The final list of conditions of approval to be imposed can be found in Exhibit A to the board order, again, which has been included in your materials. I'll also note that the applicant's additional proposed conditions of approval, which were presented to you previously, have been added to the final list of conditions of approval, again, attached as Exhibit A, and those have been numbered accordingly, because we had, I think it was 114 conditions of approval, which were categorized by topics. Instead of renumbering the whole shoot and match, we created sub-numbers, I guess you can say, so that's what the 57A, 62A, and all those numbers are about. So again, I'll note that the amended conditions of approval, that the applicant proposed during the first go-around, have been identified as Conditions 55A, 57A, and 62A, with an amendment to the existing Condition 48. So a lot of numbers to keep track of there, but I think we fleshed those out in the staff report. In addition to the condition of approval list, again, attached as Exhibit A to the board order, staff has included fairly extensive findings which support the decision. We've attached those as Exhibit B to the board order. And so again, the order before you today will approve the three applications that I described before, and also adopt the previously, or the proposed conditions of approval that I described. Be happy to answer any questions you have on the order. Again, the extensive findings, the conditions of approval, but it's certainly staff's recommendation that you adopt this order here today.
All right, clarification or questions by the Commission? All right, we're ready for a motion.
I move we adopt the board order for a posting acknowledgement plan amendment of Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan to Designate the Subject Property, approximately 34 acres, as a Goal Five Significant Mineral and Aggregate Resource Site in Chapter Three, Table Three dash O2 of a plan. A zone map amendment to apply a mineral and aggregate overlay designation to the subject property and a mineral and aggregate overlay district site plan review application for proposed mining operations for the Tonkin Holding LLC, as previously approved at the November 13th, 2013 public land use hearing.
Wow, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Now, that's the longest motion I've ever heard you read, by the way.
And I just made it up.
Oh, sure you did. All right. Further discussion on the motion, a motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Savas. Further discussion? All right, last clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes four zero. Next, Mr. Krupp.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I kinda wish Commissioner Smith were here for this one. This was an item that she had brought to the attention of the board a couple of months ago. This is a board discussion item regarding a resolution that addresses issues involving management of sea lions around Willamette Falls, and Mr. Gary Schmidt is here to talk about this resolution for you.
Hello, Commissioners, got it. Gary Schmidt, Public and Government Affairs, seeking your approval of a resolution regarding sea lions at Willamette Falls. As Administrator Krupp mentioned, this was your request that you discussed at work sessions a few weeks ago, so I'm bringing it now to your attention and possible approval. The resolution simply urges our federal and state legislators and agencies to actively manage problem sea lions near Willamette Falls and develop a long-term strategy to reduce sea lion predation on adult salmon, steelhead, sturgeon, and lamprey in the Willamette River, especially near the falls. The Willamette River, especially in the Oregon City area, is one of the state's most vibrant salmon fisheries, but because of sea lions, which are protected under the Marine Mammal Protection Act, there's very limited actions for what the state and federal government can do to control that population. And so, we're not saying harm sea lions, but rather, there has to be a good ecological balance between the needs of the fish runs, as well as fishermen and businesses that rely on fisheries, as well as the sea lions as well. So simply, this is asking our state and federal government to assist us with a way to better manage the population to serve the needs of all the communities, and recreation, tourism, and businesses that rely on the river.
Discussion? Commissioners, Commissioner Bernard.
I guess the last whereas is some concern to me. I don't know that suggesting elimination of certain number of problem, well, I guess that doesn't suggest killing them, does it?
Well, you know, the question of killing, remember, has been, long been a conversation at Bonneville, and they just recently got, at worst-case scenario, folks, the right to kill these sea lions. I don't know that it means that they will, it's just, it's an action. Gary, wanna weigh in on that?
I guess it's just stating the fact.
Just stating the facts of that court case, it doesn't mean that you are asking that to happen, but simply to ask our federal and state legislators to help provide a solution, to provide a balance for that community.
Well, the solution at Bonneville, all the solutions never worked, and now, you know, it's up to them to do what they need to do. I would just like, and we've had people, remember, testify commission last year specifically, we had steel headers, we had recreational fisher people come forward and say, you know, it's dangerous out there, it's scary out there, and it does affect a great commerce that we have here in Clackamas County. So, I would just like to say, it'd be nice to have all of the tools available that we can use to return this Upper Willamette back to its more natural state. You know, again, I go natural state, and I think I mentioned last time we discussed this, that the Indians had a way of taking care of this if it was, if it happened, and they'd be dining on sea lion tonight. So, you know, again, I think it's a very important issue, I appreciate Commissioner Smith bringing it up, and so, any further discussion or comments or questions of Mr. Schmidt?
Well, just a clarification, and this really is a request simply for the federal government to kinda fix, acknowledge and fix a problem, and seek their assistance, as opposed to any directive or giving any direction. It's kinda regulated, and we're not the regulators ourselves, and we're asking the regulators themselves to fix it.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, good point. All right, Commissioners, if there are no further questions on this, I'll ask for a motion.
Chair Ludlow, I move we approve the resolution calling on the state and federal legislators to actively manage problem sea lions near Willamette Falls.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Savas, seconded by Commissioner Bernard, to encourage the state and federal legislators to cure this problem. Any further discussions or clarification needed? All right, we're ready for the poll, Mary.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes four zero. We are at the consent agenda, I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Gladstone School District for Child Resource Coordinator Services. A board order approving the Mental Health Director designee to authorize a custody hold under ORS 426233. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services Aging and People with Disabilities Division and Clackamas County Social Services Division to serve as a regional coordinator for the Four County Metro Aging and Disability Resource Connection Consortium for the Money Management Program. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services for job opportunities and basic skills for clients receiving temporary assistance to needy families. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Approval of an authorization to purchase a mobile data computer from CDW Government for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Under the Department of Employee Services, approval of an administrative services agreement with Moda Health for claims administration of the self-insured dental program for the period of January 1st, 2014 through December 31st, 2014. Under Business and Community Services, a resolution authorizing Clackamas County Parks to apply for an Oregon Park and Recreation Department Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant for Barton Park Fire Pond Rehabilitation. And under the Development Agency, authorization to approve utility easements. And that concludes the consent agenda, and I also wanted to mention that on our webpage is the packet, and it's showing there right now, that folks can go there and see the packet of information after they read the agenda.
Excellent. Do any of the Commissioners wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? All right, I'll ask for a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Commissioner Schrader, seconded by Commissioner Bernard, to approve the consent agenda, and any further discussion? Oh, Jim, yes?
Yeah, actually, I noted on Item Four, which Mac Woods was referring to, it's actually job opportunity and basic skill training. Now, the purpose of this money is to teach people how to go to work, how to apply for jobs, create resumes, I mean, it's actually, the goal is to give people who are in temporary assistance, an opportunity to present themselves to the business community and get jobs. That's basically what this is.
Yeah, and I'm glad you mentioned that, Jim, because you and I and Commissioner Savas were adamant in the Clackamas County Business Alliance when they went through a newer Hibberts survey, and one of the things they said in there was very interesting, that the public, and remember, the report also said that they were mistrustful of government, large businesses, institutions, but what they did believe in, it was the re-education of people to put them back to work. That's what the majority of Oregonians in the survey, I'll give you that, but said that that's the one thing we do believe in, is that we need to put people back to work and properly educate them so they can get jobs. So I agree with you on that, and it's, I say again, the federal and state pass-through money, Commissioner Savas mentioned that too, if we don't get it, somebody else does. While they're passing it out, we'll take it, right? So, anyway, any further discussions on that, Commissioner Savas?
Well, I just wanna, I mentioned earlier, I referenced child resource, and I was mistaken. I know, I looked at the handwriting of Four, it said A4, and I looked at the handwritten Four, not the typed Four, so I was referencing the wrong piece there. And lastly, just to build on the Chair's last point, that, you know, they are, we always talk about our tax dollars, that we pay out to the state and federal side, and this is an opportunity for us to get some of those dollars back to our state and our community. So, not only are we competing within the state, but we're also competing at a national level, so getting some of those dollars back puts them to work for the people who paid them in the first place. So I think that's the point that I just wanted to amplify.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard.
And I just wanted to mention Maureen Thompson's here, who runs the Community Solutions Program, and her program, you know, works to get people back to work, they also work to get veterans back to work, they also work to get people who are getting out of jails back to work, you know, because, or get the education they need to move forward in partnership with Community Corrections and with Clackamas Community College. I mean, this is a program that has been proven successful. You know, you let somebody out of jail, you don't help them find a home or a job, what happens? They go back to jail. You know, or you get somebody who has been trying to find a job, but they don't know how to do it. This is how you do it. They come to Community Solutions, they learn how to apply for jobs, I mean, stop by, take a look, it's overcrowded, but there's a lot of people working hard to get people back to work, and paying taxes, which is what we love to, you know, we like to see occur.
All right. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Mary, we'll do the poll, please.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes four zero. And now, it's almost time for the county administrator update, but I wanna first mention a county clerk update. Well, the person in charge of our meetings is Mary, and I want you to note that she has a wonderful tan, she was in a warm climate for the last several weeks, and now, look, you're adding red to your face, too. All right, fine, I just wanna pick on you a little bit for that. We can have you do an update, but I think I'll let Dawn do it.
Well, I'm kinda wondering, she didn't bring back any of my ties with her to share with us, she didn't have it. Well, so, first thing, I actually have a number of things to share with you, if you don't mind. First off, we do not have business meetings next week, either study sessions or your regular business meeting. The next time the Commission will convene in study sessions will be on the 11th of March, and then your next regular business meeting is going to be on the 13th of March, and so I wanna make sure folks are aware of that. I have a couple of pieces of good news to share with you. One is that this week, Dog Services was featured prominently in a news story about what is a record-high rate of saving animals, our canine friends. what is a record-high rate of saving animals, our canine friends, and we have a save rate here of about 91% in 2013. National average is about 50%, so that's a remarkable job we're doing, matching animals that are in our shelters with families and individuals who like to take care of them and keep them and save them. The other piece of good news that I've got is another interesting article about how, according to crime statistics, the cities of West Lynn, Wilsonville, Lake Oswego, Kanby, and Milwaukee are among the safest cities in the state of Oregon. So, I received a personal note from a local insurance company letting me know that, but then there was also an article featured in the Oregonian about this, so that's all due to the good work of our law enforcement professionals working for these communities.
You said Wilsonville and Milwaukee?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Jim, we did that. As mayors, when we're mayors, we took care of all that.
Yeah. And then, a couple of other things for the public to be aware of. We are kicking off our Clackamas County Community Survey. We do a survey once every two years, and we will be making a random call of some 400 county residents. This is conducted by DMH Research. It's a way that we get valuable feedback from local citizens on issues and concerns that they may have about county efforts and services. And this year, what we're also doing is, is we're offering an opportunity for folks to take the survey on the county website, too. So, we're getting started with that. And then, finally, next week, on Wednesday, March the 5th, over at the Development Services Building at 6:00 PM, we are inviting the public to come in and assist us as we collect information regarding the county's strategic plan effort. We are inviting the public to meet with our consultants, Managing Results LLC, to share with us what they believe are the most important issues that they have about Clackamas County and Clackamas County Government. And so, while we may not have a business meeting next week, and we may not have study sessions next week, we will have a public meeting in the evening to get some feedback from local citizens.
Thank you. Will you be taping that, or is that going to be available later to view for the Commissioners?
Yes.
Is it like a testimony thing, or kind of a esels and come talk to us kind of thing?
We will bring you all the results and share that with you in open session, so...
All right, Commissioner Bernard?
I was going to say, I hope none of those dogs bark. And you might randomly call Mac Woods, here's his number. I'm just kidding.
All right. Is that the completion of your report, Mr. Crutt?
That's it, thank you.
All right. We'll go into Commissioners' communication, and I'll start with Commissioner Martha Schrader.
Well, just a few comments this morning. I had the opportunity to be at the Gladstone School District, and I noticed in our agenda that one of the things that we are doing is helping to provide a child resource coordinator for the Gladstone School District. And why is that important? They actually have a one-stop shop there that the community has come forward with to work with early childhood issues with families and children. We have a health clinic there. We have, you know, kindergarten and first, second grade students in and out, and it was really wonderful to go there this morning, because I'm on the board of Family Stepping Stones, which is the relief nursery. So, this person that we are helping to hire and get there will help those folks who have young children, who need, who have special needs, or they need extra help in order to really be good parents. And there are six different things they kind of concentrate on, and that's K through three education. It gets kids who are pre-K, if they need help with anything, it makes sure they have the service providers. It helps with pediatrics and medical homes and insurance, social services, and this includes actually helping people get homes as well as home visits, because as much as we all like to think we know how to be parents, sometimes having that help at home makes a huge difference, because sometimes we take for granted, and of course, we automatically know what to do with the little baby or our toddler, but it's surprising, the amount of help sometimes people need in order to bond with their children. It provides parent education and support, and then it also does vocational development with young parents. The relief nursery is really essential, and one of the stories they told us this morning was a young, single mother who had left an abusive relationship. She had a little boy who was, you know, four, and a little girl who was 16 months old, and a little boy extremely shy and quiet, needing help with his speech, needing help how he would socialize with people, and the little girl who was evidently quite the handful, you know, kind of the opposite temperament of her big brother. And what has happened with these children, they have acclimated, they're doing extremely well, and they got the services they need. And this young woman evidently is now in a positive, healthy relationship with someone who loves her and her children. And without those kinds of opportunities, you know, there, helping children when they're young, early childhood, is really, I think, something essential that we, as a community and we as citizens, need to continue to support. You know, the Jesuits had a saying, "Give me the child until he's seven, and I will show you the man." And bottom line is, they recognized, as a religious teaching order, how important it was even then to give children what they need early on. It was a wonderful visit, and I think it was delightful to see the big yellow bus and all these little guys with, like, rainbow colors on, with coats and jackets and boots and the whole nine yards. So, it was a really good way, from my perspective, to start off my morning. And I work with Family Stepping Stones with Mr. John Foote, Judge Van Dyke, and the superintendent of the Gladstone School District, who is Bob Stewart, so it's a good program. I want to thank everybody for helping me stay in the loop. Mary and I, well, we were in Hawaii together, but we didn't run into each other, too.
Didn't end up with the same tans, either.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, that's actually true. But I will say, I want to really thank the staff, because when I am gone, Trent Wilson consistently updates me, manages to get me on the phone, you know, make sure that as things are happening, you know, I'm following the email and getting my two cents in. And I'm glad to say that we are all going tomorrow, or I think Kishner Savis is going Monday, but we will be visiting our congressional delegation.
I didn't say anything, it was Mr. Bernard. Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, you'll talk to me later, okay. No, we will be visiting them, and we are going to be lobbying as a group, particularly one of the issues that I want to talk about with them is making sure that we get our workforce money and our weird dollars back, so we can help people get jobs. So, hopefully, that's going to be one of our priorities as we go out there as a commission to make sure that our needs are being met as a county.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
Let's see, I'm going to cut it short, because we have an opportunity to have a record here. We're not going to make it.
No, we're not going to make it.
We did it in 59 minutes once. You know, the legislature's in session, it's very challenging in short sessions. Actually, it's always challenging to get in on discussions that tend to take different routes throughout the day and sometimes into the evening and in the hallways. I just want to thank Gary Schmidt and his staff for the hard work they do, tracking these people down. And I could tell you, after visiting Washington DC and Salem, it's often challenging to talk to anyone at all. In DC, in the past, I followed women into the, many of us did, into the lounge.
That's a great line.
That's a great line. Delete that, please. We, as a group, have followed people into, all over the Capitol, just trying to talk to them, in the streets and the alleys and the hallways, hoping you could get a minute with them. But one of the things that's really valuable about that is that I've had the opportunity in the past just to slip something in on the congressional person's desk, maybe it's something that Clackamas County or Milwaukee wants, and they have an opportunity to see it right in front of them. And that's really valuable, because what it's all about in Washington DC and in Salem is the contacts and the relationships. You get people behind you, and they will do anything to make sure that you get what you need, and it's very valuable. So, we're working on building relationships in Washington DC and in Salem, and I want to thank Gary, who actually manages both those departments, supplying the staff and the information we need to take to both those places and get what we want. And we certainly do not always get it, but we certainly try hard.
Good point. Commissioner Savis?
Thank you, Chair. Last week, I, first order of business here for me, last week I made a comment or a, about the Commissioner's roundtable, and I forgot that we were going to be in Washington DC next week, so I'm going to correct that next Wednesday, which is, we'll be in Washington DC. So, it won't, our first, our next roundtable is actually going to be one month approximately from now, on Wednesday, April 2nd, at 5:30 at Development Services Building, so I apologize for that error I made last week. So, I, myself and Chair Ludlow and some of our staff ended up in Salem yesterday, and I know that Commissioner Smith is in Salem this morning. And in these short sessions, things move fast, much faster than typical. Certainly learned how difficult the job is for some of these people who sit on these committees, and how difficult land use is. And just before the meeting here today, I was watching a little bit of the live discussion that was taking place at that committee, and was watching one of our state representatives kind of cite some of the comments that he heard, and some of which I didn't even learn about till today. I was just watching, I go, wow, I didn't know that that was even discussed or put on the table. So, it's very educational, and there's so much going on, you can't follow all of it. You can't. You have to, you know, you have to pick whatever issue it is, or maybe two or three, if you're lucky, and be able to follow them through the course of it all. But I was, I've always been very impressed, I've always been very impressed with quite a number of our legislators who give us the opportunity to talk with them and have that door open and that opportunity open to listen and hear our concerns. We don't always prevail, we don't always convince them, and sometimes there's more compelling cases made on behalf of others, and we don't always win. So, I'm hoping that, at least with this grand bargain, I don't know how this is going to go, but that we will end up in a place to somewhat control a little bit of our destiny in the near timeframe.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Yes, we've all been involved in it, and the Commission is meeting as fast and often as they can, because like Jim said, and Commissioner Savis confirmed, speed of light, that's how things happen down there right now in a shortened session. The other bad thing about shortened sessions is, you know, briefings to this commission are very important, and aggregate decision arrived at for a direction, and that is extremely tough when they're meeting, you know, and making deals just as fast as they can and not involving us to a large degree. But it will be what it will be, and we will persevere eventually. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to shorten this real short and just tell you that, let's see, last night, I went to the Beaver Creek Hamlet, and we talked about road needs, maintenance specifically, which is an education and outreach plan adopted by this commission, and we sent the same person, Gary Schmidt, out, and DTD to send that message forward. That message is, we are hurting on our roads, we have to have a long-term solution to them. It's interesting, when I go out and do these, that after, and I teamed up with Mike Bisner many times, Mike's our chief engineer, and he does a great job in the nuts and bolts in telling people where we're at and what it will take to get back. I talked much more about the political part of it, is that, you know, do you want to pay? And how much do you want to pay? I shouldn't say want, how much would you be willing to pay? At the end, every time I'm there, and I know others, too, or other Commissioners involved in doing this, that I ask people, if, and I picked the number, I simply said, if we could return Clackamas County's roads back to where they should be, and that means unincorporated Clackamas County, 1,400 miles of roads, if we can return them to a place they should be in the next 21 years over a detailed plan with goals that we have to adhere to, would you be willing to pay more? Almost every one of them was okay with that, but it's run pretty much 75% when I asked the question, would you be willing to pay an extra $10 a month to, again, get our roads back, per household, by the way, back to where they really should be? And that's running 65% to 75% out there raising their hand. These are people who are involved. CPOs, hamlets, villages, these people are involved, and they've got the ear to the ground, and they know what's happening. So, we have not come forward with a plan. There are many different plans to choose from, ultimately. This is education and outreach, and by April, we will gather that information and the poll that we will do, and take a specific direction, and that direction may be to continue working on, public outreach and education. That Hibbits poll I referred to earlier also said that most people out there do not understand the role of government, the role of business, and how they tie together. And so, you know, we've got a lot of work to do to convince the public that we should be trusted, especially on this matter. It's much easier when we're doing roads to tell everybody exactly, than any other subject probably, exactly what we intend to do the first year, the second year, through the fifth year, the 10th year, et cetera, when we know how much money's coming in, so that we can adequately take care of those. I will remind you of town hall meetings. We had one in Wilsonville on February 18th. Our town hall meeting on April 9th is hosted by the Sandy Chamber of Commerce at Sandy Community Center, and you'll read on the screen there for those watching, 38348 Pioneer Boulevard Sandy, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM on September 10th, there's a town hall. Estacada Chamber of Commerce hosts that, Estacada City Hall, 475 Southeast Main Street, Estacada, same time, 7:00 to 8:30. November 12th, Town Hall, Happy Valley Business Alliance is hosting Happy Valley City Hall, same time. This is an opportunity for people who don't necessarily want to come before us and speak to us on matters here, to get an opportunity to ask questions of the commission, and we will answer them to the best of our ability, or ask staff to find out, typical with what we do here when people are testifying. There being no further business before the county commission this day, this meeting is adjourned.